Hello and welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop Meeting of October 30, 2012. The meeting is called to order. Mr. Skeet, would you please introduce item one?
Mayor members of the council, item one is an update that we're about to present to you on the light rail in the city of Glendale. Back in 2008, you provided us with some guidance and directions to complete a study. And what we're going to present to you today is basically the results of that study and the next steps that we have in front of us. Since then, since 2008, the light rail system has opened. Systems operating in Phoenix, Tempe, Mesa, and we've seen phenomenal growth and unexpected numbers of participants in that system way beyond the initial projections that was outlined when this was conceived. The study that we're about to present today and the next steps again is one of those component parts of us getting ourselves ready and positioning ourselves for the eventuality of making some decisions down the road with regards to mass transit and rapid transit, whether it's light rail or some other mechanism that we use. And before I mess it up any more than that, I will turn it over to Mr. Jomshid Mather and the representatives from the RPTA.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Good afternoon, mayor and council. We are here to give you an update on light rail, but also what we would commonly hear from time to time. It's also called high-capacity transit. Joining us today is Mr. Steve Banter and Mr. Wolf Groot. Mr. Steve Banter immediately to my left, he's the chief executive officer for the Regional Public Transportation Authority, or RPTA. We also refer to that organization as Valley Metro. And Mr. Groot is the director of planning and development with Valley Metro, and he's also the one who's the expert on the topic at hand today, which is the study that was just recently completed. Before I turn this over to the experts, I'd like to take you through some background information. A lot has happened since the last few years, and just to bring you and the audience as well up to speed on light rail in general. Glendale is one of four initial founder cities for metro rail. Three of those cities are connected with the initial 20-mile segment that was opened now four years ago. The vision of bringing high-capacity transit or light rail to downtown Glendale was part of the voter-approved initiative that set up the GO transportation program back in 2001. That vision was again endorsed then by the voters of Maricopa County back in 2004. That was when the, at that time, the transportation plan had to be renewed or extended for an additional 20 years. So we are now in that phase, also referred to as Proposition 400. These two voter-approved plans were based on information that was available to the planners and the decision-makers, the policy decision-makers at that time. However, the explosive growth that we have seen here in Glendale, especially out in the western side of the city, was something that was not accounted for before 2001, and then again even before 2004 to that extent. For example, Westgate, the football stadium, Cabela's, and not only those structures that are existing today, where there have been several entitlements and zoning and major plan, development plans that have been approved by this body. So if you can imagine, a whole lot of the vacant ground right now has been spoken for in terms of rather dense development. So the question we asked ourselves a few years ago is, do we still have the right corridor coming into Glendale? If one had to choose the first one, which would it be? There was also some interest to examine an extension of light rail going back about four, five years ago now, to extend it to ASU West Campus on Thunderbird Road. Four years ago, almost four years ago now, we came before you at a workshop, and at that time, we presented you with the findings of a study that we had at that time just completed. And based on that study, we suggested we drop from future consideration the line extension to ASU West. The projected ridership wasn't much to get excited about on that particular extension line, nor did it do anything particularly for the city of Glendale. So the remaining two corridors that are left on the table, and we know you've been waiting patiently, so have we, for the two options, the first option being the original concept, extending light rail from its terminus right now, coming into the city of Glendale, in downtown Glendale, and the second option being an extension of a Phoenix line, which has yet to happen, going along I-10 at 79th Avenue and then extended from there through I-10, and then going north primarily along the Loop 101 corridor, coming into our sports and entertainment district. With these two options in mind, about three years ago, we secured funding that would allow Metro Rail to begin the study that we have just now concluded this year. A lot has happened in these three to four years. The downward economy, which was responsible for sliding back a whole lot of rail projects, and I think in the next slide, Mr. Banter is going to be able to show you what those movements have been. Glendale's corridor, whichever one we are going to propose, has also moved along those lines from what was originally planned to be a 2017 project to a 2026 project. We aren't the only project that has slid since the opening of the 20-mile line, and that too will be apparent to you in the next slide. So if one wonders, why bother with a project that is phased out as far as an opening for the year 2026? We have a slide at the end of the presentation that will show the several steps that it takes to build high-capacity transit corridors. And yes, it does take anything between 10 to 12 years from where we are today, if you need federal funds to make it happen. And yes, you need federal funds to make this happen because of the magnitude of the costs associated with such large projects. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Banter, who will provide an overview of the region's high-capacity transit plan. And then after that, Mr. Groot will take you through the findings of the study that was just concluded, and also the next steps that are necessary to bring light rail to Glendale within the life of Proposition 400.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Mr. Banter, in your comments, you mentioned that back in 2001, the voters, you know, said that they did not want the light rail to come in Glendale Avenue. And in fact, I think that was in the language that was voted on, you know, it was supposed to be between Northern and Bethany, but that it would not come on Glendale Avenue. Now, this latest study seems to show that coming down Glendale Avenue is a preferred option, with the one going on the I-10 hooking up with the 101 being the, you know, down the road sometime. But right now, the most viable option is the Glendale Avenue option. And it seems if the voters said they didn't want it on Glendale Avenue, now we're talking as that as being the viable option, does this mean now we have to go back to the voters to do that? So if you may respond to that.
Yeah. Mayor, councilmember Martinez, excuse me. I recall this specific question from roughly four years ago, when we had the same discussion. What the voters approved, or what was passed, was an advisory to this body, in which there were several considerations of how the half-cent sales tax could be divvied out, and what are the elements of that plan. The study, as we refer to as a line coming to downtown Glendale, has been assumed to be somewhere along Glendale Avenue, only because it's right in the middle of that wider two-mile corridor. As we go through this presentation, and when it's time for Mr. Groot to explain what the alternatives analysis is, that's truly the point, and I might be taking away some of words from Mr. Groot's prepared remarks as well, that is when this community decides on the alignment, the location, or the rough location of stations, if in fact it is light rail. And I say if in fact it is light rail, because everything's on the table. Everything we've done so far is to identify between two very wide, very significant corridors. Let's call one of them the east-west corridor coming to downtown, and the other one a north-south corridor heading towards the Westgate area. Between these two, if we had to make a decision as to which one do you want to push forward because you'll be relying on federal funds, and those federal funds have to be measured by the FTA and is for them, these are the experts here who would then tell you, what is the criteria that the feds are going to be looking at first? If we stand a chance of getting light rail or high-capacity transit to Glendale, which corridor stands the better chance as we know it today, given the rules as they are today? That's what this decision point is all about. But whether it's actually on Glendale Avenue and all that discussion, that has truly yet to happen. We commonly refer to it as Glendale Avenue, but it's coming to downtown Glendale as an endpoint.
And also, the $70 million that would be required as part of Glendale's portion, that's of course over and above the federal funding that's necessary. Is that correct?
That is correct. That portion today is only a very far distant estimate of what we think might be the cost as we know it today. That portion can change depending on less or more funds from other sources. There's the regional source of funding, and there are several parts of federal funding. When all put together, the local share is going to be in that proportion.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I really want to respond to your statement that the proposition was an advisory only from the citizens. I'm extraordinarily uncomfortable with that. I was very heavily involved in whether this even went to the ballot or not. There was a strong opposition to light rail, period. And it made it to the ballot because of Phoenix, because Phoenix had approved it, and the consultant we had said we should have it on there because of Phoenix. There was very strong opposition. Now, there was going to be an actual opposition group to work against this, and they no longer figure into the picture, it was the new car dealers. But they were ready to bite this tooth and nail. So the wording was carefully crafted, with the input from the business community, then the car dealers, to explicitly and specifically say this would not be on Glendale Avenue. Things change. I mean, our whole world changes, and we have to deal with change on a number of different matters. I mean, the whole situation with the coyotes and the arena, it's all about change, situations change. But when the voters vote on something, and the response from the jurisdiction's elected body is, well, that's just an advisory, kind of a, like we do at the league when we pass resolutions saying the federal government should do this and that, they're called postcards to Congress because they don't pay attention to them. Is that what we're going to get to here? In my remaining time, and later as a private citizen, I will always work against the notion that something is on a ballot, and people go and make a decision, checking yes or no, and then the government body, governmental body, whether it's the city of Glendale, or state of Arizona, or Maricopa County says, that was just an advisory note to us to consider. I cannot begin to tell you the level of discomfort and displeasure I have hearing any vote of the people referred to as just advisory. I understand this is a matter for another time, but I'm going to have my words on the record right now. Thank you.
With that, I will ask Mr. Banter to continue with the presentation.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me here today. I do appreciate your time and attention. The 20-mile light rail system originally cost $1.4 billion to build. Currently, and still growing, roughly $7 billion worth of economic development along that alignment. Our ridership originally projected at 26,000 a day. The month of September, average weekday ridership was 50,000 riders. It is being well-received by the customers, your constituents, the communities in which we operate through. I like to say that what public transit does, whether it's rail or bus, we connect people to life. We provide options for them to get around in their busy days. We provide opportunities for them to make, although little, but an impact on the air quality in which we breathe each and every day. Our FTA administrator Rogoff says frequently, when he's speaking around the country, he talks about the Phoenix, the Valley light rail system as being a model of success. And when I talk about connecting people to life, he had photos, he was here one weekend for an event. He came in two days early, unbeknownst to anyone, traveled around our valley in our public transit system, which he does periodically, took photos of young high school students going to the prom on light rail. There was a group of about 10 in the valley going to the prom, and he says, his words, not mine, as a parent of teenagers, it's nice to see that the work that I do and the work that we do provides options for them also on a very important night of theirs, not have to also worry about them driving. So he speaks about this throughout the U.S. when he goes and talks about the importance of transportation. As Mr. Banter said, funding a system like this is expensive. We will roughly locally through our regional sales tax, Prop 400, and some local sales taxes, provide the local match to a federal partnership of roughly 50% of the cost of the project. One of the unfortunate things that happens as we expand transportation throughout the U.S. is the federal partnership goes down and down. Originally, it was 90-10, then it went to 80-20. Now, it's roughly 50%, 50% local and federal participation. The shift in the economy here also moved what I call all of our schedules to the right. It pushed them out farther than we wanted. As Mr. Banter said, you were originally in this plan to start work in 2017. We're now at 2026. Another example would be Paradise Valley Corridor. It was originally in the plan for 2026, has now been pushed outside of the Prop 400 funding plan, but it is in the overall regional transportation plan of 2032. So as we look at advancing transit here in the valley, it is very important that we recognize not only what we've done, what we're planning to do, but also how we communicate amongst ourselves through our social circles on the importance of public transportation and the value that it brings to the region that it serves. The corridor development has been moving along, maybe not as quick as I would like, but has been moving on quicker than some other major metropolitan areas in the U.S. Our Central Mesa Project, recently on October 12, we signed a partnership with the FTA. Secretary, Transportation Secretary LaHood and FTA Administrator Rogoff, we're both here in the valley. Very momentous occasion for us to extend 3.1 miles into the center of Central Mesa. When that is constructed, this line will connect three urban cores in one transit option for folks from one side of the valley to the next. Our partnership with the FTA, $75 million out of a roughly $200 million project. We're hopeful to continue moving on schedule and on budget with a revenue operation date of the fall of 2015. Concurrently, we just recently kicked off, or reinvigorated, the construction activities for the northwest extension in Phoenix, heading up to Dunlap along 19th Avenue. If you recall, originally, that was done with local monies, with no federal participation whatsoever. And when the economy went in the wrong direction in 2009, we put the project on hold with the city of Phoenix. We have just recently renegotiated our construction and design agreements with our partners, and we are going to start construction here in the beginning of 2013, again with a completion revenue service date of the end of 2015. You might have heard of talk about the Tempe Streetcar Project. While some might think Tempe streetcar, not regional, we've brought it up through all of our regional bodies, and in concurrence, that it is a regional asset, that it provides connectivity amongst the downtown core in Tempe to the high-capacity transit system of light rail, provides people in the south, the south part of Tempe, to potentially walk or connect by bus to the streetcar, to connect to light rail, to get to their final destination. We are currently conducting the environmental analysis for that alignment. Recently, through MAG, we've also, although not in the regional transportation plan, approved a shift in federal monies from roughly street monies to transit monies to expand on the Central Mesa extension out to Gilbert Road. This was a very creative way to transition monies inside the city of Mesa, not affecting the other member cities of the valley, and provide quicker opportunity to get infrastructure built out to what one would call a game changer in terms of connecting to the East Valley cities. We're looking to complete that project in mid to late 2017. We've also got two planning studies underway. We've had very strong support from Congressman Pastore as it relates to advancing transit here in the valley with studying the South-Central Corridor, Central Avenue South, roughly baseline road. And we're also looking at the Phoenix West Corridor, which Mr. Banter talked about, going out to 79th Avenue. One of the interesting thoughts about the South-Central area is it's very dense in population, and the extension that we're currently building, hopefully up to and including Metro Center, will provide an opportunity to provide people connection to jobs, where they live in South Phoenix and connect up around Metro Center where opportunities for employment currently exist. I appreciate your time and attention. I would be glad to answer any questions, or if I could, introduce Wolf Groot, and he can provide some detailed guidelines as it relates to the studies that we're currently here to discuss. Thank you.
Councilmember Lieberman.
Thank you, mayor. Oh, 1989, 1990, we talked about an overhead elevator from downtown Glendale to the airport, and the route along Glendale Avenue was acceptable. I had a store, 4822, 2426 West Glendale, for 11 years along that corridor. We did fight about that. That particular plan fell by the wayside, the overhead. When we hit $1 billion, it sort of turned the public off. But we did make calls, we tried to get that bond issued. However, the route then did call for straight down Glendale Avenue from downtown Glendale. I can't remember the cross-street. I'm not sure it was 19th Avenue where it exists now, but I do know that it would have been possible to take your luggage, to get on the elevator, and end up at the airport if the bond issue had passed. So what you're doing was approved many, many years ago as well, straight down Glendale. The car dealers, some of them objected to it. But what has happened along the route that is now in Tempe and extending in Mesa, the merchants are wild about it, as I understand. And I would have been wild about it as a merchant had I still had the stores on that area in Glendale Avenue. I welcome it. I think you're doing a great thing. And I'm not too sure where the public comes in, because as I said, we were making phone calls, and we got defeated on it. But the term $1 billion was more than the average person could stand. You're talking of millions, nowhere near $1 billion with what you're planning, apparently.
Mayor and councilmember, I think that depending upon the corridor you're talking about, we could be talking about another billion-dollar investment, particularly along the I-10 corridor, as it relates to today dollars. But as you look at the infrastructure that we're building and the return on the investment that we've gotten, we seem to be on the positive side of that debate.
Thank you.
I think he's talking about something called Valtrans.
Yes.
It had very little to do with Glendale and very much to do with the valley, and there's a lot of skepticism. And my comments with regard to Glendale Avenue is that people voted on the ballot. And I don't think, while all the studies will show that some sort of high-speed transit is better coming to downtown Glendale, if you go to the storefronts across the street, as narrow as Glendale Avenue is, and say, you're going to have a train down here and room for one car and no parking, I don't think they're going to jump up and down with joy and say, bring it on.
Well, we even talked about one-way streets in downtown Glendale.
Right.
Not on one occasion, but on three different occasions.
On Lamar and Glen.
What you say is true. There is a four-block area of Glendale, a three-block, where, as a matter of fact, on one, there's no parking along the side of the street because there isn't enough. There was also track at one time, straight down Glendale, when it started out as a horse-drawn trolley and ended up as a power trolley. I'm not too sure that track still isn't in the middle of Glendale Avenue, under three inches of asphalt, because it was there at one time.
Mayor Scruggs, city council members, appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the study that we've been working on since, actually, 2010. And also, I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about where we're going from here and what our next steps are in the development of a corridor to Glendale. First off, the study that we've just conducted really looked at two corridors. As John Shid mentioned before, we looked at an east-west corridor, which was in the regional transportation plan, linking 19th Avenue with downtown Glendale, and actually beyond to the west. And we also looked at a corridor that extends westward from our I-10 project, what we call Phoenix West Corridor, from 79th Avenue along I-10 and up the 101 corridor. Now, I should say, because I've heard this comment already, we did not look, we are not making recommendations or looking specifically at a specific route or an alignment, whether it's Glendale Avenue or some other street. We are looking at the corridor in general and trying to assess which of these two corridors has the most potential to move forward first, and do the quarters have potential collectively to move forward, maybe both at some point in time. And we're looking at it from two different perspectives. We're looking at it from a local perspective, what works locally, but we're also looking at what plays best with the federal government. As Steve's mentioned, Jomshid also, we're looking for a significant federal investment here, potentially as much from the New Starts Program, as much as 50% or more. As Steve mentioned, we also have another 20% or so that also comes from formula monies from the federal government. So overall, this project would potentially have 70% federal funds involved in it. The study that we did, we actually included not only the staff from the city of Glendale, but we worked closely with staff from the city of Phoenix, Maricopa Association of Governments, and of course, from Valley Metro. We looked at several different things relative to light rail as part of this study. We looked at ridership, we looked at both operating and capital costs, we looked at existing and future land uses, we looked at the potential for economic development, whether it be redevelopment or new development in these corridors. We also looked at property impacts, physical feasibility, environmental factors, and a number of other things. But I think the important note here is that many of the things that I just mentioned are part of what the Federal Transit Administration looks at when they evaluate a project. We go through a very rigorous process with the Federal Transit Administration to receive new to receive New Starts funds to this region. And so, we need to make sure that if we're expecting to see federal money, that we're meeting their criteria. And that's what we were looking at as part of this study.
Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Excuse me. I want to go back to, and read from the staff communication that we received. It says that Metro staff concluded that both corridors have merit, but the Glendale Avenue corridor is determined to be the most feasible candidate for federal funding and is recommended for advancement to the next phase of an alternative analysis. Earlier, I heard the comment that this study is going to be done, but it's open. This seems to be pretty specific, so would you clarify that, please?
Mayor Scruggs, Councilmember Martinez, what we're saying is, when we're saying it's open, the corridor, the way we define corridor, it means it's a wide band. It's two or three miles wide. There may be multiple alternatives, multiple alignments or routes within that corridor. So what we're looking at is at a corridor level, a wider level, not a very specific route. We're not saying it's on Glendale Avenue. We're not saying it's on Bethany Home. We're not saying it's on 101, even if we were looking at 101. There are multiple alternatives that we'll need to look at. In fact, I'll talk about that in just a moment as part of my presentation, about what we'll be doing next in the next study because the next study will address specific route alignment alternatives.
Thank you.
Yeah. If we could. So just to quickly summarize what came out of the study over the last couple of years, looking at the east-west corridor to downtown Glendale, we saw that there were several advantages or opportunities. One was that there is an economic development potential in this corridor. There is opportunity for redevelopment potentially within the downtown area as well as to the east. And the light rail project could help to encourage that kind of economic activity. In addition, we saw that this is a corridor that has good bus ridership today. It's an existing bus route, or bus routes, not just Glendale Avenue, but the others that are paralleling as well. They have a good bus ridership base. And the reason I mention that here is that the Federal Transit Administration, whenever we bring a project to them, one of the first things that they ask us is, "Well, what kind of existing bus services do you have? And how well is this corridor received today?" And we really want to see this succeed as a bus program before we move into a major capital investment in this corridor. So those are things that they also want to see from us. We also recognize that this particular quarter, the east-west as opposed to the north-south, has, in the 20-year planning horizon that we looked at, has a higher ridership forecast, depending on which of the options we looked at. There were several options we looked at, but it could be anywhere from 50% to 75% higher opportunity for ridership in the east-west corridor. Also, from a cost-effectiveness perspective, and the FTA rates cost-effectiveness now based on cost per rider, because of the higher ridership, we see that this east-west corridor also has greater potential for success, meeting that criteria for FTA. So bottom line here, really from the first four bullets, is that if we're looking at Federal Transit Administration FTA funding, the opportunities really seem to be, in the nearer term, to looking at that corridor having greater potential for federal funds. And again, it's because of the criteria that they look at, several things they look at is cost-effectiveness, they look at existing and future land uses, they also look at economic development, and those are major criterias. Land use, actually, as a result of the new authorization that just passed in the last year, land use is becoming a greater evaluation criteria than it was even before. So they're looking very closely at what is the existing land use in the area as part of how they will fund projects that are coming through this program. We also saw some potential here for, a greater potential for near-term implementation, particularly if we're looking at affordability. And this is not just the city of Glendale, but also the city of Phoenix, who would be a partner in this effort. We saw a greater opportunity for affordability in the near term there. And also, if you look at, as Steve mentioned, the northwest extension will be done by 2016. The Phoenix West Corridor, we're still planning, maybe 2023. And that's what we have in the program at this point. But if there's opportunity to accelerate, we have greater opportunities to accelerate in the east-west corridor than we do in the north-south corridor because of the completion of other projects that this would connect to. And finally, the last note I'll make on this slide is that in the current Regional Transportation Plan, that's what RTP stands for, in the current Regional Transportation Plan, this east-west corridor is identified already in that plan for implementation. If we go to another corridor, we would have to go through what's called a major amendment process. It's not insurmountable, but I just want to make note that there's a process that you would have to go through to shift the direction from one corridor to another. With regard to the north-south or the 101 corridor, whether we are on the freeway or adjacent to the freeway or a street, a local street around that freeway, hasn't been determined yet and would be in the future. But we see with the freeway opportunity, we see opportunities for higher travel speeds, which often attracts riders when they can travel quicker. And also, if you look at the overall travel time from, say, the Westgate area to downtown Phoenix, using the corridor along the freeway, along I-10, provides opportunity for higher speed or shorter travel times in that direction. And again, it depends on which alternative we pick as to how much difference is in travel time. We also see a very different opportunity along the 101 or the north-south corridor in that this is, in a lot of cases, this is undeveloped land. And there is an opportunity here to shape, that light rail could play in shaping the land uses in this area. And so, there is an opportunity to focus development. It's not as much a redevelopment opportunity as it would be in the east-west corridor. And finally, the last note I wanted to mention on this one is that we're serving a very different kind of a travel market here. This is very much geared, this particular corridor would be very much geared to commuters, people going to work, and also, we have a lot of major event activities, actually at both ends of the line, at the Westgate area as well as in downtown Phoenix. So again, positive factors to consider in this corridor. Go ahead. So, as was already mentioned here, what we see is that both of these quarters provide potential for different reasons. And we see merits in moving forward with both of these corridors. However, if we have to make a decision about which one is first, our recommendation at this point is that the first one be the east-west corridor for the reasons that I've already mentioned. And what we're also recommending as part of this is that we move to the next phase of study, which is called an alternatives analysis. And this really is what starts the federal process. And the alternatives analysis, so you understand better what we do in this, is we actually look at several things. The first thing we look at is the mode. That is, is it going to be light rail? Is it going to be a streetcar? Is it going to be some kind of a high-capacity bus solution? We need to look at these various options, even though we understand that there have been votes in the past that have suggested light rail as an alternative that we should be looking at in this corridor. We need to satisfy the federal government. We need to look at all feasible modes and anything that comes up within the community. So this is very much a community process that we'll be going through as part of this next step. We also, in this phase, we select the mode, but we also select the route or the alignment. And as I've said before, right now, we're at a wide, broad corridor. The intent here would be to narrow this down to a single line on the map. So you know exactly what street it's on and where it would operate. So that would be the result of this study. We will also have some information at the end of this study on stations. This is important to have that for, to understand what kind of ridership potential we have. But station decisions get made in the environmental process that goes beyond this study. So we won't be making those kind of decisions here. And we also have a good opportunity here in this study to get a better handle on what this thing's going to cost. We have an understanding of opportunities and constraints that exist with the alignments that we'll be looking at. So to get to this study, the alternatives analysis, combined with the criteria that I mentioned before, that the Federal Transit Administration looks at, cost-effectiveness, land use, economic development, all those things, these things all together become a very important part of the evaluation by the Federal Transit Administration. So towards the end of this study, the Federal Transit Administration gets very involved in our evaluation process to understand that this is something that they want to support. Just a couple more notes I need to make about the alternatives analysis process. This is very public, as I mentioned. Valley Metro has historically been very proactive with the community. When we get into this phase, we want to make sure we understand all the issues early. We don't want to wait till final design or into construction to find out we have major issues to deal with. We like to find these out early in planning. It's a lot cheaper to deal with early in planning than it is later on. So that's important to us. The other thing that we've also found is that we've worked with the community in other corridors, is they have good solutions. People out there have ideas that we've implemented in several of our projects, things that our engineers couldn't come up with. And so, we'd like to listen to what they have to say. They know the community best, they know the alternatives that we should be looking at. So as we do community involvement, we look not only at having public meetings, which is something that we'll do, but we also look at having discussions with community and business groups. We would reach out to neighborhood associations where they exist. We address commissions and committees to the extent that you all would like us to in this city as well as in Phoenix in this corridor. We also work with the electronic media and make sure that the word is out. People, that's where people get their information these days, so we make sure we do that as well. And one of the things that we will also do is work with this city council over the course of the study. And of course, come back at the end of the study to ask you to endorse our recommendation. But throughout the study, we would come back, as much as you want us to, to review the progress that we're making in developing this project. As we develop this study, we don't just look at the funded area. We typically go beyond. And when the studies that we've done in Mesa and Tempe and other portions of the valley, we want to better understand the travel market in the corridor. So we typically will expand beyond. So looking into the west of downtown will likely be something that we'll at least analyze and better understand how it impacts what we're implementing in this corridor. Also important for this phase, there is no city money involved. The Valley Metro organization, through our regional transit funds, will be funding this alternatives analysis study. So this is a regional cost, not a local city cost to you all. Finally, of note here on this slide also, I'm spending a lot of time on this slide, but the north-south corridor, as I mentioned before, we still see merit in this. We think it should continue to advance through the study process. We should continue to work with the Maricopa Association of Governments. In fact, they did a corridor study, or a regional study, called the MAG Regional Transit Framework Study a couple of years ago. And this corridor was identified as a potential within that study as well. So we know that there's potential, and we definitely want to encourage continuing study going forward. So, my last slide. This shows you the process. As I mentioned, the alternatives analysis is the first thing we do. Typically, the alternatives analysis is a two-to-three-year process. It can take longer, but very rarely does it take less. In fact, the Phoenix West Corridor alternatives analysis that we just finished took us five years to get through. So these things can be quite lengthy, especially when you're involving the community to the level that we have in our process. So you may think that, you know, we have a completion date of 2026. People ask, "Well, why are we starting now? Why are you starting 13 years before the date to be done?" Well, again, it's taken us, for the 20-mile project that Steve described before, it took us 12 years from the start of the first real study that we did for that project to the time that we opened the doors for operation, took us 12 years. The Mesa project we're working on right now is taking only 10 years, but that's only one community. And we had no choices on the route, was going straight down Main Street. We knew pretty much where we were going. So given the complexity here, given that you have two communities engaged, given that you have multiple route options, we think 12 years plus is probably not unreasonable to consider. And especially since the federal government is involved, you can always add time for that. And that's, so we think that the timeline is probably right on target at this point in time to get started with an alternatives analysis here in early 2013, with your support. With that, Mayor, that's my comments.
Mayor.
Great presentation, Wolf. Thanks for being so thorough and easy to understand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the Glendale Corridor. Now, does that Glendale Corridor also apply to Phoenix? Because in our earlier discussion several years ago, I recall that Phoenix wasn't too excited coming down Glendale because of the cost, because they were going to have to pay, you know, from the connection from 19th down to 43rd. Now, when we say that we could pick us anywhere between Northern or Bethany or whatever, is Phoenix, do they go along with that concept also?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, actually, I forgot, there's a last slide here. One more slide. Actually, to relate to your question. This is the study area map that we are starting with. We actually, when we start the alternatives analysis, we will work with the community and work with the cities involved and define what the boundaries of this alternatives analysis area are. And we are actually looking at, not only going from 19th Avenue out to the 101, but also from Northern Avenue, at least as far south as Camelback. We think there's some opportunities, you know, coming to the Phoenix part of this, we think there may be some opportunities that Phoenix will see advantageous because there's significant land uses along Camelback that would also generate significant ridership. Camelback is also a good ridership route. So I think, at least at this point, in working with the city of Phoenix, they're encouraging us to move forward. They've been supportive of moving forward with this alternatives analysis. As far as the solution, that's the reason we're doing the study, to see what they all will agree with and what Glendale will agree with as well.
One more comment, Mayor, if I may, please. I don't want anyone to think that because of the questions that I'm asking that I'm opposed to light rail. I'm not. I want to get that out in front. As a matter of fact, back in 2000 or whenever that was, there was a contingent of us that went, I think it was to Dallas, I forget, there were two or three cities that we went to.
Denver.
Portland.
Denver. And I remember talking to some of the writers, students, older folks, like myself. I would just talk to them and see what they thought about it. And nothing but good comments. And I also remember, and I forget what city it was, that there was a section or a portion of the city or adjoining smaller city that opted not to go into it. And once it got going, they were screaming how soon they could be included. So I want to point that out also. But I do have some questions, and that's why I was asking those questions that I did. And especially in view, as a mayor said, that both had been staken. Thank you.
And, you know, we'd have to get that ballot language out, but it didn't include Phoenix. It was very specific. In fact, it said between, it must be on a major arterial. Must be between Bethany and Northern, which already we're going beyond Camelback, but may not be on Glendale Avenue. And they may have, I don't remember, but may have, I don't know if that started at 43rd or at 51st. Probably at 43rd because the car dealers were behind that, and they were between 43rd and 51st. But Phoenix, it didn't include what, I mean, Phoenix can put it wherever they want, just when it comes into Glendale. And, you know, my point here, I'm not arguing for the north-south thing. I am distressed to hear the words used that a vote of the people is just advisory. I think we're treading on very dangerous ice there because there are many things that people vote on. And I think it would be very disconcerting if they think that their vote is only an advisory and the jurisdiction, whatever it may be, is going to do what they want anyway. Thanks for your opinion, but we're going to do what we want. So that's where, this has nothing to do with whether it should be north-south or east-west, but those words concern me.
Councilmember Lieberman.
Actually, going the east-west along Glendale Avenue, one of the problems, of course, was I-17. The other problem for the continuation was a six-way intersection here, which no longer exists. And that would help no end if the exists, and that would help no end if the plan was to bring the light rail along Glendale Avenue and cross over 59th on its way out to 101. There was also talk at one time of perhaps bringing it down Ocatillo or coming across Glendale, 59th Avenue, turning and going to Ocatillo on Grand. Well, that can't exist anymore, because Grand is sub-level now. But the, the plan, the talk we just did discuss and didn't get it done, the putting in one-way streets on downtown Glendale because of the very narrowness of Glendale Avenue. The downtown development, that was started in 1980, and we talked about that in two, in 1990 also. And, on two or three different occasions, the idea of one-way, if it ever happens, that may be one of the solutions for downtown Glendale. The difficulty, of course, is Grand Avenue chops it up where, because it goes down, subterranean or sub-level. The two streets that were one-way across Grand Avenue, Ocatillo and Glen, can't cross Glendale Avenue anymore. And so, the turning, and then, of course, we took out 59th Avenue when we put this building in. So, the difficulty is sometimes compounded in the planning if the attempt was made to put it down Glendale Avenue and then go one-way streets for others.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this project has exciting possibilities for Glendale. No matter where the alternative lands, I mean, you've got a wide corridor between Northern and Camelback. And actually, when you think about it, extending out along Camelback is not a bad idea, because it's already traveling on Camelback through Phoenix, and it lends itself to redevelopment of areas that could certainly use redevelopment along the Camelback corridor, both in Phoenix and in Glendale. So, I think it's very intriguing, the possibilities that are presented by this project. I am delighted to hear that it's not going to cost us anything at a time when we are very happy about that kind of scenario. I did have one question, because you threw out that there were options, and that it could be light rail, could be trolleys, could be high-capacity bus service. But my first question is, is when the economic downturn occurred, wasn't bus service curbed, and did that affect high-capacity bus service? Does anybody know? Jamcheed, you might know.
I'll give a stab at it. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, when the economy went down in the past three to four years, on the bus side specifically first, there were significant changes that need to occur. Each city had to, had to absorb a portion of the cuts, and several of Glendale's future extension of bus services going far west, all the north-south streets, west of downtown and so forth, were the ones that we had to give up. They, they were planned for future implementation, but we had to give them up, because in the life cycle of Proposition 400, it just wasn't enough. So, yes, a significant portion of that has been given up.
Did we not also reduce the frequency of bus service?
We did that as well, Councilmember Clark. There were a few routes which, after evaluation, see if we had to make additional cuts, which would those be? And we examined it based on ridership and adjacent land use and the least impact to the existing ridership. So, there was some reduction in service as well.
And that's what concerns me when I hear about these light rail options, is that if it is determined that it should be bus capacity, should we go through another unfortunate economic period? Would that capacity be, capacity be diminished? And that would, I don't know if you would incorporate that into your study, but I certainly would like to see how the economics of the situation would be affected in the future with regard to high-capacity bus service. And, and my last thing is a comment. You said that you would be studying not just Glendale, but basically the West Valley and the potential for extending transportation corridors throughout the West Valley. Did you not?
Mayor Scruggs, Councilmember Clark, well, not quite that expansive.
Not quite that expansive. How expansive do we get?
What we're, what we're showing up here on the map is that, that, kind of that, whatever color that is, kind of a yellowish-orange color that goes all the way out, we're basically looking at a study area that would be in that area. Now, we may not, during the beginning of this study, we actually sit down with all the affected stakeholders, and we define the study area to, to greater level. So, it may be a little bit different than this, but we're not really trying to solve all the West Valley's issues in transportation with this study. It's really focused on the, the corridor. And as I mentioned, our, our primary focus is in the, is the part that's funded to the area from downtown Glendale and to the east, but we like to look beyond that, because it gives us a better understanding of, of how all these things work together into the future. Transportation isn't just a standalone project. It's, it's really a bigger system.
So, and my point is, is that by looking at that four-mile swath within Glendale, there are going to be things that you are going to learn, that you're going to pass on us, that maybe we hadn't even thought about before. And I think that's a very invaluable part of the, of the study. And selfishly, if I had my druthers, yeah, I probably would support the north-south corridor, because it gets out to West Gate and obviously to the potential for West Gate. But I also know too that wherever you place light rail, you encourage redevelopment and development. And there are parts of Glendale that are in sorely, sorely in need of that kind of tender loving care, and this would be a catalyst to generate that kind of redevelopment, which we could really benefit from. So, I support wherever it ends up in downtown, along that four-mile swath, and I know that, that light rail will eventually also come out to West Gate, but I, I fully support moving forward with this, and, and let's get some hard data and some information and learn from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the Camelback idea is relatively new, and that really is an exciting one. I mean, Grand Canyon University has just gone, blossomed, expanded and so forth. I'm also thinking Camelback Road in so many places is wider than Bethany and Northern, we have other things going on Northern, but, you know, again, it goes back to what's the wording in the, you know, in the election, and that would have to be worked with, but I can see just on the surface, Camelback is very interesting, go by the spring training baseball area, and obviously, it'd probably be much more appealing to Phoenix because of their whole Maryvale area that they want to redevelop, as well as, as Councilmember Clark said, already on Camelback. But what I would like for you to do, Mr. Band, I think you can do this in great detail as, as Mr. Metta, but Councilmember Clark, you know, brought up the whole subject of, well, we don't want to, you know, lose some service because somebody doesn't want to pay for something. I would like you to address, especially for our viewing public, the total dependence that the City of Glendale has on the City of Phoenix in the area of transit, whether it would be bus service or whether it would be light rail in the future. Because when we went through these cutbacks, one of the things you didn't mention in terms of what routes were chosen to be reduced was, were the aspect of the routes that the City of Phoenix discontinued, or the frequency, either the route itself or the timeframe. So, we can do whatever we want, buzz around inside Glendale, but if we're not hooking up to service across that border, we have no service. And that was a big part of reduction of buses, as it would be for light rail. And also, while we have the advantage here in Glendale of having a permanent transportation tax, Phoenix does not. Phoenix must go for reauthorization. I believe their tax will end 2020. So, just as you have to plan far in advance for things, they're probably going to need to start, starting up that whole election cycle, I'm going to guess 2016, 2017. So, the, you know, we need to have some full disclosure on this. The honest thing, the honest truth is, if that tax is not reauthorized in Phoenix, their light rail train just shuts down, because that's, that's what's paying for it. They were running a lot of bus service before their tax, but they added more with their tax. So, we are dependent. We can't just start something at our borders. We have to hook up what Phoenix is doing, and, and I would really like you to explain that, so the public understands all decisions don't rest here.
Mayor, if I might, I'd be glad to. You will hear in probably the next board meeting about our efforts to look regionally at our transit system and start discussing how we interconnect our communities, our bus routes and our light rail system, so we can provide people with, with time transfers and connectivity outside of city borders, and try to shift the discussion to the customer versus some of the, the parochialism that we have discussed in the valley recently about how our transit system operates.
Okay. Well, we don't want to talk about jurisdictional equity here, because that's even more confusing to any, than anything else. But I want our people in Glendale, who are not going to be at the RPTA board meeting or the Valley Metro Board meeting, to hear that not all decisions, I mean, I was as Vice Mayor, Freight and Councilmember Martinez, were at the meeting about the parking right sighting, and we heard people are not happy at the limited express route service, correct?
Correct.
Absolutely not happy, and they're, you know, that wasn't a good place to try to get into the intricacies of, of how everything interconnects. But for people who listen and who go back on our internet and listen to these meetings later, I would like people to understand that it's not all our decision. We have to connect to something else to get them there, and if the something, somebody else decides they don't want that service anymore, for whatever reason, it does jeopardize ours and destroy our interconnectivity.
Mayor, you're absolutely right on that. The system that we have, whether it's the bus mode or the rail mode or any other high-capacity transit, RPTA functions as the body that brings jurisdictions together. And it's for the majority of the jurisdictions put together to then decide on what works, and especially in the last three to four years, where we had the situation of facing significant loss in projected revenue to the life of Proposition 400. That decision is obviously made by representatives who are going to vote in the best interests of their individual cities. Because by, by virtue of the way transit operates and the way transit is meant to serve the entire region, it does go through several jurisdictions. So, it is up to several cities to jointly agree to be able to fund something together. We are talking here about various examples. If you take Grand Avenue as one of those examples from the far west side, whether it's from the City of Surprise through Elmira, the City of Peoria, then Glendale, then Phoenix, and all cities have to be on board, or else you've got a dysfunctional way of, of funding it, and those are the realities that we're facing. So, specific, Mayor, to the question that you asked, in this case, yes, not only would the City of Phoenix have to agree on the, on the aspect of where the alignment is, which is a question of capital cost and their land use decisions, as it would be for us, but also the operating costs and their reliance on that future extended tax, not the one that is expiring 2020, but the one that will be beyond 2020, does have to include significant components of whatever their participation is, of first the capital and then the operating. On our side, we have accounted for, now, this is not money in the bank, this is money, this is, this is, this is 25-year programming. This is what you've required us to maintain in the GO Transportation Program, to be accountable for anything we build. What we've already built, we have an operation and maintenance component of it planned out, so that when we do collect the funds in the later year, 2025, 2026, we know today how much to set aside for those investments that you've already made a decision on. The City of Phoenix would have to do the same thing post-2020, in order to make sure that they don't run out of their side of the funds, keep their, their portion of the mileage running.
Thank you. I, I hope our public, our residents get more knowledgeable about transportation. It's, you know, I have, and I'm sure everybody does all the time, say, "Well, just put in the light rail. When can we, can we have it, like, next year?" And, wow, we depend on each other, we help each other when we build an interconnected system, but we also depend greatly on each other to keep both sides in balance there. And I don't think that's really well-understood. Probably never will be, huh? So. Vice Mayor Freight.
I was just going to mention, I'm, I'm just excited that finally the west side and the City of Glendale is, you know, are being considered, and we were talking about it. Like the mayor has said, you know, people say, "Well, you just connect to it." When can we do it? You know, I says, "Phoenix has to bring it to our border, and we're not going to pay to, in Phoenix, to go to wherever they're, you know, where it ends right now." And we don't know where they're going to, you know, where it's going to connect. That's what you guys are going to come up with. I've heard astronomical costs to go over I-17. That is, it's pretty expensive to do that. And then, you know, connectivity, I've been in other cities, yeah, you have the light rail going east and west, but, hey, I want to go somewhere that's two miles north. Well, they have connectivity with buses. As soon as you get off, there's a bus stop right there, and they're saying, and you hear an automatic saying, "The bus will be here in 10 minutes." And then you can hop on that bus, you go wherever you're going, you're there. When you leave, you go, take that same bus back. You get off the bus, and you hear a, a message says that transit will be going by in the next five or 10 minutes. So, it's, it's connectivity. It doesn't have to be, you don't have to be on the same mode of transportation from point A to point B. And I do like, and I do agree with the mayor, I was here when the, we had mentioned, and voters voted on a corridor, not specific, you said between such and such and such and such. So, I don't want anybody to be out there speculating, it's going to be hearing, "Hey, I bought land along Glendale Avenue, and what happened?" Or, or anything like that. And my, as a representative, even though this may not be in my district, you know, I care about the people that, and businesses that could be displaced, or maybe just, you know, you know, they may, they may just have to close up, or they may not be part of the, the benefit of the, the system. So, there's a lot of thought that has to go in, and I believe citizen input is going to be pretty interesting. And you've been there and done that, I've heard, but this is the west, this is the west valley.
Wild west.
Yes. I don't know, wild west, but, you know, it's going to be interesting. And, and this is the growth area. My goodness, you know, you see Loop 101, the future of the 303. This is where the growth is. I mean, we have the open space, and, and that open spaces, once it starts getting filled up, it's going to be certain areas, especially along Loop 101, it's going to be high-density. You know, we have, you know, you see Central Avenue, you're going to see a lot of that along Loop 101 and Glendale Avenue. So, and people are going to, as people age, you know, I mean, I'd be great if I could hop on some type of light rail and be able to go down to the airport from Glendale. There, there was, you know, several years ago.
Senior prom, too.
My senior prom, much, much senior.
Senior.
Real senior.
Senior, senior prom. But, you know, even now, I mean, we do these studies where, hey, do you ride your, would you, would you like to take public transportation to work? I said, "Yeah, but it doesn't run when I go to work." Or, "Does it run after I go to work? What's your work schedule?" Well, it could be anywhere from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. Well, you know, they don't start till such and such, and it stops after such and such. So, then I have to cross the one that says, "Single driver in a car," because it's just not offered. But I am excited. I've been in other cities. I'm from the Midwest, and I see, you know, what, you know, what's happening and what was happening four years ago when I moved out here. So, it's exciting, and I look forward to it.
Mayor? Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking forward to it, one of these days, and not having to drive the thousands of miles a year I have to. a year I have to drive. When we talked about this a few years back, I remember we kind of thought about the I-10 being the ideal route because of employment, you know, moving, coming into Phoenix and the west have, giving regional transportation for the west valley. But I am going up 101, especially to the entertainment district. But I'm really also intrigued with the Camelback. I hadn't, we hadn't talked about that before. And Camelback Road is the border between Phoenix and Glendale, so they would have as much incentive as we would have to work on that quarter. And there is a lot of land, a lot of empty land, even from 43rd on, it's industrial. Even the homes on around 59th and Camelback, there's wide, wide areas there all the way out. So, that, that is really, especially for development, economic development, I think that would be a, a really good thing because I thought going up the 101 and coming back into Glendale, because we were always thinking that maybe Phoenix wasn't wanting to pay to bring light rail. But I've also talked to some people from Phoenix that they are, they are thinking regionally. And that's nice to, to know that they are. So, but I would love to see it if we come, if it's the east-west, it has to go to the 101. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to stop in downtown Glendale. So, that's really, if it's going to be that quarter, it's got to be to, to go clear to the 101. So, but it is exciting that we're talking about it again. When, when we did those exploratory trips, we went to Portland. Councilmember then, Vice Mayor Freight and Councilmember Goulet and I went to Portland. And there's no better city in the world that, for transportation than Portland. We saw it, everything, every type of transportation. You could get anywhere, anytime, and it was really, it was really nice. So, it, we'd like to get, you know, even an inch of the way there. So, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very good.
And that point she made is really relevant. Getting light rail from downtown Glendale to the 101 on Glendale Avenue is all on Glendale's dollars. Nobody to help us. But the Camelback Road being the dividing line between Phoenix and Glendale, obviously, there would be some interest on Phoenix's part because it gets them to, they have a lot of areas they need to redevelop and they have development along the 101, too. So, it would get us to the, where we want to go, which is the base of our entire office building area there, Camelback up to Northern, which is where I think the riders of the future are going to be anyway. But it would do a lot for Phoenix, too. And, and you don't end somewhere. I mean, Bethany ends, what, at 83rd or something?
Yeah, it does.
And Northern is going to be our Northern Parkway. So, that's really unrealistic, but.
Councilmember Clark.
And, and I guess we're all kind of glommed on the Camelback, but it really does make sense. Camelback is only two miles south of the West Gate. And when, what you said about trolleys or bus service going from a stop at Camelback and 91st up to the West Gate area makes perfect sense. And if you think about it, it's really far cheaper than going, at least from Glendale's point of view, from going along the I-10, then going up the 101 to eventually end up at Bethany, Maryland or Glendale Avenue. It's a quicker route, really, when you think about it. So, I think there's a lot of benefits, including the cost sharing that we've just heard about, to really look hard at Camelback Road. Makes a lot of sense.
Well, we're all ready for you to begin your four-year, five-year, whatever it is.
To approve that Camelback Road is the way to go.
We've got a big event out at Luke that starts at 6 o'clock, so I'm going to try to move this along now, if that's okay with everybody, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. It's actually, it's at the Wigwam. It's the invitation to meet General Rothstein. I said Luke is. Oh, gosh. Makes me dizzy.
That's a CDBG presentation.
Wow, I thought maybe you got a golf ball.
That must be Windows 8.
Terrible. Okay, Mr. Skeet, please introduce item number two. And thank you very much for having the PowerPoint presentations handed out to us. We can use them as we go along. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. The second presentation today is a presentation that discusses and provides, provides you with an opportunity to provide us with guidance on the CDBG Community Development Block Grant process. And we discuss this, this from time to time over the years. And I think over the last two or three years, we pretty much followed the same recommendations and took that same recommendation to the, to the Citizens Advisory Committee for guidance. And I thought it was time and important that we bring back the discussion to you so that you can either reaffirm and/or, or give redirection to the Advisory Committee group and staff as we prepare for next budget year. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Samah Harin and his, his staff to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. The Neighborhood and Human Service Department administers the city's annual grants process for the Community Development Block Grant, the home investment program, partnerships, the emergency solutions grant programs. These programs are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We provide support for the Community Development Advisory Committee, CEDAC, who is charged with formulating the annual funding recommendations, which they present to you yearly, usually in the spring. Joining me at the table today is Mr. Richard Schwartz, Chairman of the Community Development Advisory Committee, Gilbert Lopez, the Community Revitalization Administrator. We are here today to provide you with some background information and then receive your guidance on next year's funding priorities, which will assist the Community Development Advisory Committee on the funding recommendations they will be presenting to you next spring. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. First, I just want to go over the mission of the Revitalization Division within the department. Is, CEDAC is an integral part of that, that portion of it, is we are charged with leading, the leading entity in implementing the annual action plan and the community consolidated plan, which actually has all your goals and priorities for how that money is used in the community. And we move that forward through CEDAC making their recommendations. We receive an annual allocation, as, as Director McCallum talked about, of Community Development Block Grant and home and emergency shelter grants. Last year, we spent about 2.58 million in, in all different types of programs that cover a wide range of things that you have approved and prioritized before. About 40,000 people were helped, Glendale citizens, in different areas. The, the highest amounts seem to be in the food categories and also in people calling in to Community Information Referral for assistance. So, that's where the numbers are very high. And of course, we have all the other things that we help with, with his housing rehab and some of the other programs. Right now, the city expects about 2.5 million. We're, we're basing that on our past allocation. As you know, the federal government is going through some, some budget discussions, so we don't know exactly what will happen if the sequestration issue hits. And right now, we're looking at about an 8% reduction in Community Development Block Grant if that occurs, which is about $160,000 out of the 2.5 million. Also, just to go a little bit over the process, the grant orientation occurred September and that's where all the nonprofits come up and get information on whether or not to apply. And that's usually where the, the nonprofits find out if they qualify. So, we have sometimes small ones that come up and want to apply and then they see what the requirements are because there's a lot of oversight and transparency. And most of these funds are, are actually reimbursement. So, it's not just put out there. Public's money is protected in that way. We also will give the CEDAC the binders in November. It's the next meeting, I believe it's in the 15th, and they will receive all the information. We will also conduct five public hearings in January to allow all the applicants to present in front of CEDAC. They present, CEDAC has the opportunity to ask as many questions as they want. These are open to the public. And we have a section in there where the public can comment on how the money is used. And then in March or April, we'll have a 30-day public comment period where the public can tell us whether or not they like the recommendations or not. And then we have, we respond to that and then we give you response and the information that we go through. And also, and then in April, we'll go before you and to get this approved. And you'll look at the, after the 30-day public comment period and tell us whether or not you approve of the plan and it'll move forward. Last year's funding priorities were keeping people in their homes, keeping neighborhoods stabilized, providing emergency home repairs, assistance with core needs such as food, utilities and shelter. And also, a part of the, that went along with this are some other priorities that we've used to support this, which is housing rehabilitation programs, a clearance and demolition of blinding conditions, and also programs and projects that help revitalization efforts throughout Glendale with an emphasis in the centerline of the redevelopment area. And with that, we have Chairman Schwartz here and, and we look forward to your input and comments and recommendations so we can move forward with the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. A question on the keeping people in their homes, does, does that include help with those homes that, those homeowners that have problems with, say, facing a foreclosure? Or is that under separate funding?
Mayor Scruggs, Councilmember Martinez, that is included. It could be from a variety of different sources. Right now, the funding goes through CAP and, and the Community Action Program assists with some of those preventive services. So, it's partially funded or can be funded with Community Development Block Grant and sometimes with emergency solutions grants funding.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Alvarez.
On the nonprofits that come in to apply, are they here in Glendale or are they based somewhere else? And, you know, like the city of Phoenix, do they do the same thing that we do? Just fund, you know, even though they are not a Glendale-based organization?
Mayor Scruggs, Councilmember Alvarez, we do have some nonprofits that will apply that are not located in Glendale. But what they have to do is to prove in information or statistics that the people they serve are from Glendale. And they have to have a method to verify that. So, for instance, there's some that provide services for handicap individuals in a camp. And they have to show the percentage of those individuals that are from Glendale. And because by federal regulation, we can't provide more than what the benefit is to the city of Glendale. Can't do that. So, there is some methods to identify what the, what the benefit will be to Glendale citizens.
In, in the housing revitalization, that started in the 80s, right? How many homes have you revitalized from the beginning of the, of the program? Do you have any idea?
Mayor Scruggs, Councilmember Alvarez, I know we started in 78 in the downtown core area and it's in the hundreds. It's, it's got to be, you know, this year, we're projected to do about 55. But there are a variety of, some of them are roof repair, some of them are emergency repair, and then some are full-blown housing rehab. So, I can get those numbers for you. We have, we have cumulative totals going to the beginning.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Freight.
Mr. Schwartz, I think what you should like when you're looking at the grants, this is what I've looked in the past as results-oriented, you know, what have, if they've been in Glendale and received past grants, what did they do with the money? How, how can they show you how they best spent the money? And, and HUD, that's HUD is doing that, too. HUD is saying, hey, you know, we're going to do grants, but we're going to fund certain areas because of the results. Not because they, they want to know that their money is being spent, but then we have something to show and it's a program that, wow, you know, if it's working here, that might be a model for some, for another part of the country or state or anywhere. You know, the thing of, when you read about, it says, programs that prevent homelessness, it doesn't necessarily all the time need to be people that are behind their rent. It could be a person who all of a sudden has a handicap and there's organizations out there that'll come in and they'll make, make it ADA accessible for, for the family. So, that, or the individual, so he still could stay in his home and he's, he still can get around, take care of himself. But if he didn't have his home fixed, you know, with ramps and then widen the bathroom door, put in certain things, he would then go into some type of institution and, or some type of facility where it's probably costs two, three more, two or three times more than what it would cost for that individual staying in his home. And I think the last time, we have emphasis on food. I think it was the YWCA who did the Meals on Wheels. And I think the funding at the time, like everybody else's funding, was falling short. And we said, well, we need to, that's an important thing in our, in our community. And that's another emphasis. So, I don't know if you knew the background on all that or what, you know, but that is, that's the reason why we did, you know, put the emphasis on that. And like I said, I can't say enough about different groups or organizations if you can really check and see, you know, what results did you get with the money? And how many people did you really help in Glendale? And if you did, how much did you help, you know? And it went for helping people and not necessarily hiring, hiring someone to be able to implement a, a program or something. We want the program up and running and we want to fund the program.
Thank you.
The elephant in the room right now, and I don't know if you heard the budget work or the workshop at which this was discussed, but the city of Glendale is removing general fund, funding from the YWCA Senior Meals Program and from cash, from Central Arizona Shelter Services. And I don't know if there are other organizations that provide here core needs, food, utilities and shelter. Those agencies have already been notified that because of our financial problems, they're going to have new financial problems. So, they've already been notified that they're going to lose the general fund funding. It has been suggested to them by our staff that they ask for more through the CDBG funding. And it has been suggested by staff to the council that we amend our directions to you to focus in on those core services. So, I'm going to deliver that message in case you're not aware of it because we need to have this right up in center. You know, there are a lot of great programs. And as Vice Mayor Freight said, some of the organizations we give money to is to pay for staff to implement programs versus actually getting direct services to folks. And I think in the past, all of us, the, the various committees, the citizen committees, as well as the various council members, have tried to help as many different types of needs as possible. And I believe what we're, I believe there's a majority that agrees at this point with the funding being cut in other areas to those really basic core services, people in their houses, food, utilities, that believe what we want to do today. You can see if everybody nods, is to ask CEDAC to put a heavier emphasis. And I'm tempted to say instead of, but I don't want to do that. I'm getting in trouble. But put the heaviest emphasis on those of our residents who have been used to receiving and counting on, really, receiving certain services from the city that are now not going to be able to do that because of our budget problems. So, is that pretty clear? And I invite the others to indicate if they agree with that direction.
Mayor? Councilmember Clark.
I, I support what you just said and I think most of us do. And I think the emphasis, as long as the economy continues to be underperforming, is to meet immediate needs as much as possible. And when we talk about things like senior Meals on Wheels, that's an immediate need. When we talk about cash that provides shelter, that's an immediate need. So, I, I would agree with the remarks of both the Vice Mayor and the Mayor that instead of devising new programs, ramping them up, that as long as the economy remains in the condition it's in, that you focus your efforts on the programs that, that we, that the mayor has mentioned, but also focus in on meeting immediate needs for Glendale residents.
Great. Would you like to ask us anything or tell us anything?
Mayor Scruggs, I really, at this point, no. I don't have anything to tell you. These two gentlemen have been real clear in the direction of what you just said. We talked about before we came in here this, this afternoon. I will. said, what we talked about before we came in here this afternoon, I will endeavor very, very well to guide you to.
Right.
What you asked.
Right. Recognizing, they'll all vote that what they feel is best used for them, and we recognize that.
That's the way they'd be.
Yeah, but just, in the past, I think we've gotten in the last few years pretty loose in our direction, and it was been more or less, well, these areas, but whatever you think. And I think right now, we're seeing that since there are some folks out there that are already frightened because they've been told their funding is gone, we're being a little more specific and targeted in what we tell you, and we appreciate you being willing to hear us say that.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
That's cool. Like a bridge or something.
Got all kinds, but that one doesn't make me dizzy at least. That golf ball thing was strange.
No, that's Windows 8 again.
No.
Yeah, that's the, that's Man East Pedestrian Bridge. I like Windows 8 better.
Windows 8 better.
Okay, Mr. Skeet, would you please introduce item three?
Mayor, members of the council, item three today is a discussion that I would like to present to you as far as the outcome of some of the efforts that we have been working on over the last two to three months. I think back in June, or maybe it's July, we brought to you the discussion about the needs for us to consider some refinancing opportunities, since that was a three-part approach that we used to balance the city's budget at the time. The financing option that was discussed at some point, at some length that time, was the lease, lease-back option. It was, it was one that we are continuing to explore, depending on the, on the, on the needs and its availability. However, today, what we are presenting to you is really an opportunity that is kind of driven by the market in some, in some regards. We have some outstanding municipal bonds, both in the MPC municipal cooperation area and the PFC, the public facilities cooperation area, that are ready and probably as ready as they'll ever be for a refinancing opportunity for us to be able to capitalize on some savings and some reduced interest rates that we are seeing in the market. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gokee, the Chief Financial Officer, to make a presentation today on some of the options that we are considering and the possibilities that may exist.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Joining me at the table today is Nancy Feldman. She's the Managing Director of Public Finance Credit Strategies for Wells Fargo, who is serving as our underwriter. I just wanted to, today, we are presenting an update on bond refinancing. We have been working with our financial advisors, bond counsel, and underwriters to identify opportunities to refinance our MPC and PFC debt to take advantage of lower interest rates and favorable market conditions. The refinancing is in accordance with our policies in our debt management plan. We currently have approximately 273 million in outstanding MPC debt. These bonds were used to fund several projects, including the Jibbing.com Arena, public safety training facility, Van Harrow, and the Expo Media Center and parking garage at Westgate City Center. These bonds have current interest rates between 3% and 6%. We currently have 199 million in outstanding PFC debt. These bonds were used to fund Camelback Ranch. These bonds have current interest rates of 5% to 7.5%. The majority of these bonds were issued for a 30-year term. Our proposed refinancing plan is to refinance all of the PFC bonds and a portion of the MPC bonds totaling approximately 252 million. This amount may change due to current market conditions when we get out in the market. The expected interest rates are 1.65% to 5%. This refinancing will not extend the final maturity of the bonds. The net present value savings from this refinancing is estimated to exceed 28 million, and cash flow savings over the next five years is approximately 35 million. This will provide cash flow for the cash, I'm sorry, cash flow savings for the general fund and align the debt service payments in future years when we will be receiving payments from the ACSTA and revenue from possible development in the area. Our proposed timeline on this transaction is meeting with the rating agencies over the next couple of weeks, an MPC board meeting, and also I might add a PFC board meeting in early November, an ordinance that we will bring forward to council, for council consideration at the November 13 evening meetings, then in mid-December, early to mid-December, sell the bonds, and then final, final closing late December. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lieberman.
Looking at this chart, I do see where you're saving, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the first seven or eight years, but I also see where the last five years in a row, the debt service is going to cost us more than what it cost us presently.
Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, yes, as I mentioned earlier, we are setting it up for savings, a little bit more savings in the next five years, and then aligning, aligning the payments in the outer years when we will be receiving payments from the ACSTA, and also possible sales tax from the development in that area.
Hopefully, yes. We were trying on sale tax in the area to develop Camelback Ranch, which never happened. You say here that it's possible to get 1% to 1.5% financing from Wells Fargo?
Mayor and councilmember, yes. Interest rates are at an all-time low in the tax-exempt markets, so that the early maturities of those bonds could have rates as low as 1.1%, and it depends on how short or how long those maturities are, and they will vary across the period of time shown in the chart.
At that rate, they must be variable refinancing, because quite obviously, in the last five years, the interest rate goes up for more than what we're paying now. What's our final closing? You showed on your chart there, what's the interest rate? It's like an ARM, it's an adjustable rate mortgage. Obviously, it dropped, interest rate dropped, but yet it's still above what it was, what we presently have for the last five years. What is our closing interest on the refinancing on MPC bonds?
Mayor and councilmember Lieberman, the various interest rates that I mentioned are fixed interest rates. It just depends on the maturity and the bond. So there's usually a range of the differing maturities within the bond sale, and so that's where you get the range of the rates.
So it is a fixed rate?
It is a fixed rate, yes.
If your mortgage is fixed rate, don't you set it up so that your payments are somewhat the same? Or do you set it up so that you pay, you, so, well, you're right, you said the idea was to save money in the first five years, and that apparently is what this does. I think that interest rate is great. I tell you, take it. Take it. Don't hesitate.
You're just looking for direction to continue on.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, really, what we wanted to do is give you a summary of the presentation and an idea of where we're going, since we're going to bring this back to an evening meeting for a vote. Usually, when we, when we present a vote for an evening meeting on actions like a bond refinancing, we also attach an emergency clause to that, since we want to be actively and be ready to activate the sale as soon as possible after the decision. So I didn't want to surprise the council on the 13th of November without a discussion, and be presenting to you a discussion of a refinancing of up to 250 or 260 million dollars with an emergency clause without a discussion here in public force. So I took the opportunity to present it to you today, letting you know that we will come back to you in November with that short window between November 13th and December 34th to try and go to market and sell as quickly as possible.
Okay. You and I have already discussed this. Will you have two motions available, one with an emergency and one without, because you need, do you need a majority of the members of the council, which will only be six, or a majority of the seven that we're supposed to have, because it's questionable? I'm not going to be here. I agreed, I will try to, and this has been known for many months, right, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I will try to call in, but where I will be is questionable, whether I will be able to have phone service.
Yes.
So will you have two types of motions available?
Mayor, council, yes, I will, and we will need the two-thirds majority of the existing council.
Two-thirds of six or seven?
Seven.
Two-thirds of seven, even though there will only be six.
The council is in there as one vacancy, so we would still need.
Need six.
Five.
Five. We need six.
Six.
You need six. I think we went through this once already recently.
Six.
So if it's not possible for you to be, then we would have, we would have a motion that would not include the emergency clause, so that we can proceed.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
But the purpose of the emergency clause is to take, to enable to locking the interest rate. Is that the reason? Okay, I just wanted the public to understand that. It's not that we're trying to push something through. Well, yeah, we want to take advantage of the market and.
Which could change overnight.
Change. Yes, and we thank you from Wells Fargo that you're, you know, you're taking this endeavor on, and we feel very, I feel optimistic, very optimistic about this, so thank you very much. Yeah, we'll do a cheer for you after.
I'm totally neutral. Okay, anybody else, anything else? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
This completes the open agenda portion of our, of our meeting, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we will reconvene in executive session as quick as we can get ourselves organized. Thank you.